Welcome to Woodstock City Council. It is Thursday, November the 5th, 2020. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with Section 238, subsection 3.3 of the Municipal Act and Section 16.6.24 of the City of Woodstock procedural bylaw. This meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and broadcast on Rogers TV. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the city's website following the meeting. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the agendas, meetings, and minutes page of the city website. Councillors will be raising their hands in view of their webcam when moving a motion requesting to speak and when a vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we'll take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor needs to leave the meeting at any time, they are requested to inform the clerk. And I'll ask now for all of the councillors to turn on their web cameras. Welcome. And? Any disclosure of conflict of interest? Councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, I councillor Mark Schadenberg declare the following potential pecuniary interest, the conflict of interest as agenda item number nine B under a consideration of correspondence. The subject matter represents a conflict for myself as I'm a part-time employee of Kendall Cab and the nine B pertains to the taxi industry of the city of Woodstock.
Thank you. Any other disclosures of conflict of interest? Seeing none? Disclosure of new business? Councillor Accioni?
Yeah, I'd like to move the Woodstock City Council appoint Gary Wade to the Woodstock Public Library Board for a term ending November 14, 2022.
Thank you, and we'll deal with that when we go further in the agenda. Any matters arising from the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes from our last meeting held October 15th, 2020.
Moved by myself second, sorry, second if I councillor louder that the minutes of the regular meeting of Woodstock City Council held on October 15th, 2020 be adopted.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous? We have no additions to the agenda, so next up is delegations and today we have Laura Adlington with a request to temporarily place cameras in public trails. And welcome.
Thank you very much for having me. I have prepared a presentation, so I'm going to share my screen so that you can see some of the visuals that I want to speak to. Just confirming you can see that? Okay, perfect. So I am here today to ask for some help to find my dog. I'm sure some of you have seen our posters around town. Her name is Maggie. My request, as you shared, is that we receive a temporary exemption from municipal code chapter 665, section 4.1, and it's the subsection 14 that speaks to recording video or pictures in public spaces. We would like the general authority to work with the Parks Department as well as the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority whenever necessary to place trail cameras and feeding stations on some city-owned or leased property, and that would be in accordance with the Ontario Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Our request is for the next 30 days. I want to use some of my time just to outline why we are making this request to the city and how crucial this is to getting our dog home. So this is Maggie. She is a six-pound Yorkie. She's 11 years old right now. We've had her since she was 12 weeks old. She never leaves my side. She's very stuck to me, but she has no teeth. So her tongue is always hanging out. That's given her sort of the signature look that people know about, but luckily it still doesn't stop her from eating. So she eats rotisserie chicken, chip, ice cream, all these things that she loves. She still loves to snuggle and play fetch with her seven-year-old human sister. She's a spoiled princess, but she can be very shy. I share these pictures of Maggie and some details about her so you can understand how much we love her and how difficult it's been for our family to not have her with us for the past four months. So on June 25th, 2020, I opened my front door to get flyers off my porch. Maggie followed me out and I did not know and she inadvertently got locked outside. She started to roam the sidewalks of our neighborhood and that's where someone took this picture of her. So within the first three hours, a bunch of well-intentioned neighbors did what they thought was best and about 20 people chased her trying to catch her. Understandably, she was terrified and she has not stopped running or avoiding human contact since. To understand why we are making this request to you, our city councillors, you need to understand just how challenging it can be to find and secure a lost dog. I certainly have had my eyes opened. On many lost dogs, unfortunately, when they're not fearful at home, when they become lost, they become terrified. You may see that some dogs will calm down and then approach people, others just continue to run from everyone and that can even include their owners. One of the worst things someone can do is call their dog. Oftentimes people advise us to go call her. She won't come. She's been missing so long. She's switched into what they call survival mode, which means she relies on her DNA and her thousands of years of genetic history to find food, water, and shelter. Luckily, when you start looking around Woodstock, there's a lot of food, shelter, and water. So between people who feed cats outside or people who leave scraps for wild animals, garbage, wild berries, there's lots of food. We have the Thames River and Pitoff Lake, so she's been hanging around those areas a lot because it's easy water access. When you think about this information, it's very possible that Maggie is still surviving. If you just do a quick Google search, as you see, there's many, many stories of dogs that are in these situations and live for quite some time. Statistically, 94% of lost dogs do make it home. When we work with tracking experts, they've assessed her on a scale of zero or sorry, one to 10, one being very low odds of survival, 10 being very high, and she's rated as an eight. So her survivability is is strong. Unfortunately though, that doesn't necessarily mean we're getting her home. So the most common ways to get a dog home are is that they find their way, they get tired or calm down or become injured and will approach a person, or they go into an area where they can be just a gate shut and secured. He hasn't done those things so far. She's not helping us, that's for sure. He continues to just be scared and running often. So what we know from working with experts is that lost pets will develop patterns and routes of travel. This means they will regularly visit and move through certain areas and these areas can be identified through sightings as well as trail cameras. Once the dairy areas are identified, we can arrange feeding stations which will be leveraged to capture an animal. We have started to identify some of these areas for Maggie, and this is currently our best hope of getting her home. So I want to provide some information just around our sightings because it gives some context to why we're here at city council meeting. Maggie's been missing for 123 days. We have worked our butts off to get our girl home. We have raised awareness through posting lawn signs, door-to-door canvassing, social media campaigns and advertising. We have searched on foot through trails and forests. We've sat and watched for hours. We are well-versed in differentiating animal footprints and animal feces. This is my new skill. We have slept with our house doors open. We've camped out overnight. We've worked extensively with animal search and rescue experts, trackers, and used scent dogs. Despite all of these efforts, we're encountering the same roadblocks. So we have had 17 of our 30 sightings on city property, especially trails, forests, and storm ponds. We're asking for flexibility to work with the Parks Department because Maggie continues to move. If you look at this map that we have on the screen, the very bottom line is Highway 2 or Dundas, and then the furthest left yellow line going up is Highway 59 or Vance Etart. Within these zones, we have had two sightings in zone one, nine sightings in zone three, 10 sightings in zone four, eight sightings in zone five, and one sighting in zone six. So while our recent sightings are all in zone four, we are concerned that if we restrict our areas and she moves again, we will be unable to use the trail cameras to assist us. So what we're asking for is with 57% of our sightings of Maggie on city property and her continuously moving, we would like the general authority to work with your Parks Department and the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority to place trail cameras and feeding stations in areas of interest that are in city-owned land or city-leased property for the next 30 days. We will continue to take our guidance from Lost Paws, Inc., which is a federally registered animal search and rescue organization that's been leading us through our search. We will continue to seek owner permission for use of private property first with the use of city property only as a last resort. And we will follow the guidelines that are in the Ontario Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection Act, including but not limited to appropriate signage, contact information, and destruction of videos or pictures after a specified period of time. Should council not be comfortable with our primary request in this broad authority, our secondary request is that we have provided five specific areas to the clerk. Our focus is still though on our primary request as due to Maggie's frequent movement, we're concerned that you know, we give you sections today and if she's in a different section tomorrow, we would still be limited in our ability to secure her. When we finally saw pictures on of Maggie, we have two pictures of her on a trail camera. It was near Pitoff Trail. We were elated. After 71 days of searching, we were finally able to confidently say she was alive. We were working closely with the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority in establishing the feeding station. Because the city had entered into a lease agreement for the trail system, they became involved and asked us to withdraw equipment. We have been anxiously awaiting this meeting to present to you in hopes that you will support us with your vote. We need your help in order to bring her home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions of council? And? Councillor Accioni?
Thank you, worship through you to Laura, of course. We've spoken and I'm really encouraged for you to find Maggie, of course, and just do have a couple of questions though.
Sure.
In the last, when's the last time you've actually have seen Maggie or somebody has reported Maggie?
So we had three potential, we always have to say potential sightings because you know, without a picture, we can't guarantee on October 17th, so just over two weeks ago.
Okay, so good chance still around in the area and everything else?
Yes.
If I can continue with the I thank, obviously I have a lot of concerns with the privacy laws and everything else. It's no question. With what the city has gone through recently with our parks, you know, my mind has certainly shifted in different directions that sometimes safety and everyone's safety, maybe including dogs as well, should be looked at as well and always waited. So I will tell you, I'm confident that I'm in favor as long as we have city support and guidance and everything else through that way. But we obviously have to be very careful and be wise where we put these. So I just wanted to say thanks for it and good luck too.
Can I make a comment to that too?
Sure.
So, so as I said, we've been primarily working with privately-owned property because of our restrictions. And so really the areas that we're most concerned about are areas that we cannot access through private property. So for example, within a forest system that has a storm pond. And so in some areas, there is no human traffic. In other areas, there is some, but we would also be willing to work with the Parks Department around, you know, specific kinds of day that maybe we could place cameras. So for example, our trail photos happened at 11:00 PM and 12:00 AM. So if the Parks Department feels more comfortable in certain locations facing cameras only at night, that could also be something that we can work on with them. We are definitely, you know, anything is helpful. Right now we have nothing, so anything is helpful.
And further discussion, councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, through the mayor, I guess to our director of Parks and Recreation, Brian Connors is on this meeting as well, just sort of want to get his opinion on on just the the general use of cameras in particular for this purpose, being on trails, being in parks.
I would.
Obviously, we're not talking about inside.
Sorry, I would suggest councillor that we hold off on that discussion with staff until after the presentations are done and we get to consideration.
Fair enough. Thanks a lot. Yeah.
Okay, questions for Laura, councillor Lotter?
Thank you, and through the mayor to Laura. I just have, my question is, would any expense incurred, is that all going to be paid by yourself? You wouldn't expect anything, the city paying for any of this?
No, thank you. That's a good question. I should have clarified as well. The majority of our equipment is owned by the federally registered search and rescue group Lost Paws, Inc. We also have some other people who are supporting that are search and rescue folks as well. They're just not quite as local. So we do have equipment that's provided by those people. You know, setup removal would would all be done by obviously myself or my husband. And and there really wouldn't be any expenses. If there were to be any concerns, then definitely like we would, we would address those.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Talbot.
Thank you, worship through to Laura. Just wanted to hear properly, you said that you were working with the Upper Thames Authority and they had been helpful to you?
Yeah.
That was, was that only for feeding stations or is that for cameras and feeding stations?
That was for cameras and feeding stations. We were working with them when they were managing the trail system. And then we learned sort of through the course of our process and getting approval for a different location that the city had entered into a lease agreement about some of the trails and that's sort of what brought us to this point.
Okay, and just to further that, so you still managed and placed the cameras, they just only gave approval, they didn't do any of the legwork themselves?
Correct. We just had to let them know the locations of cameras understandably when they have staff maintaining trail systems. They wanted to know where they were and sort of what what areas we would be working in. We did all of that. We just provided you know, communication and collaboration in terms of locations with the managers.
And when you did that, how often do you move a camera? Like do you leave it there for so many days and then move it and same with the feeding station?
Yeah, that's a great question. It varies a little bit because it is typically based on our sightings. So right now we have a few areas of particular interest that we believe she's moving through. So we would typically place cameras and feeding stations in those areas for typically it's about a minimum of three to five days. Sometimes we go up to about two, three weeks, but we may place a camera and then get, the problem is she keeps moving, right? So we may place a camera and then we get a sighting in a different location and we have to kind of reassess and and move cameras.
And these cameras that you're using, if I may continue worship, these cameras that you're you're using, are they the ones that you would put out and they take snapshots or are they taking videos? Like these are the outdoor cameras that if you're trying to figure out if you have a raccoon getting in your garbage or something, you're taking pictures, but that's, they're just, so they're just taking snapshots of anything that I guess, is it, is it thermal as well as movement?
Yeah, I can kind of clarify. That's a great question. I should have included, sorry, my apologies. They are all trail cameras that are motion activated, so there is no video or photos being taken until something moves in front of it and triggers it. There is no sound at any time. The majority of cameras are only photos. So they would snap three quick pictures and then again go into inactive status. We do have some cameras that allow you to choose a video or photo mode and then we would obviously take direction from the city and yourselves if there's limitations to the broad authority around which method we use. The value of video is if you're in an area such as a forest, you may be able to see the direction of travel versus you may not be able to see that with photos. I would say the majority of the time though, we use photos. So no, we're no recording until motion activated and then three quick photos and then back into dormant.
And if I might just a lot final one, your worship. Now these, there if I am familiar with the cameras myself, but they're like on a card. Is that correct? Like everything is like a a card that you insert into the camera and then you take out.
So there's two different types of cameras. The majority of ours are SD cards that you need to remove the SD card, look at the photos. We do have four cameras that use a wireless network to send photos to our phone and then we can delete those photos on the phone. So we typically use those if we're doing like live monitoring where we may need to sort of get out quickly. If we're just trying to monitor an area for travel, we would typically use our SD card one.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Councillor Lotter?
Thank you. Through the mayor to Laura, just one more question. So this would take, could take pictures of people on the trail also, not just the animals and it's not low or anything like that, that this would show actually people, people walking along on the trails?
So for the most part, our cameras have not been needed in areas of frequent travel because understandably Maggie's not moving through those areas unless it's at nighttime. Whenever we place a camera, it is less than a foot off the ground because she's so small. We're trying to get, you know, at at her level. So certainly say, say we were to request to place a camera on a busy trail and the Parks Department approved it. Yes, you would have people walking through and pictures of probably, you know, from their ankle to just below their knee. Historically, that wouldn't be necessarily an area that we would focus on. And as I said before, if we were focused on that area, our request to the Parks Department would likely be camera placement at night because she'd be traveling through those more busy areas during the nighttime. We can also count on the fact that we've done a good job of educating the entire city of Woodstock about Maggie that if she is on trails during times where people are moving, we trust that we will get sightings. So what we're really trying to target is, for example, that storm pond area that we've seen on camera, a forest that we believe she's been sleeping in. These are areas that people are not moving through at the times of day we believe she is. So we have to rely on cameras to help us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Talbot?
Sorry, I totally forgot this one. Last question, Laura, I promise, because I haven't used one of these cameras in a little while, but I'm sure, and I'm sure they are much better than what they used to be, but can you program the times that you want it to be activated? Is it like you said that the one that you can, it will send it to your phone. So can you program that? I don't want it taking any shots until 10:00 PM at night till 6:00 AM in the morning or anything like that?
No, that's not something that they are able to do yet. That would be a great recommendation to the manufacturer. So right now what happens is, and even on on private property, we've done this, we deploy and and then pull based on the times of day that we need. So we, it's been very busy to be frank, like we, we would go out if we need a camera to trigger starting at, you know, 9:00 PM, we go out, we we set it up at 9:00 PM and the following morning we pull it at 7:00 AM. Yeah, unfortunately, they don't have that setting quite yet. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. Thank you very much. And our next delegation we have is Janet Norman regarding sharing a stop for waste and recycling. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Birch and councillors for this opportunity to present as a delegation today at council. This is my first time appearing before council. I have lived in Woodstock for five years and many other Ontario communities before that. My background is in journalism, research, and the financial industry. As you may be aware, under the International Paris Agreement, Canada has committed to reducing its greenhouse gas emissions by 30% to 2005 levels by the year 2030. The government of Canada has also recently announced it will develop a plan to set Canada on a path to achieve net zero emissions by 2050. Human activity increases the amount of greenhouse gas emissions in the atmosphere. This idea of sharing a stop is not new and it does not belong to me. There are existing examples in Woodstock where this practice is already in place. For example, residential complexes and cohorts. One can be found on the northeast corner of Devonshire and Lansdowne. My suggestion would be to embolden members of our community to place their waste and recycling close to their neighboring household where possible to reduce the number of stops trucks make. Encouraging sharing a stop is a no-cost solution for individual households to strengthen Canada's goal of net zero emissions at a micro level. There are existing points of communication in Woodstock where the public could be educated and inspired to participate. I have six examples for council today and I am open to more ideas. First is the city services calendar distributed in March for the upcoming year 2021 to 2022. Second is the City of Woodstock website under the garbage and recycling and collection headings. Third is the Oxford County Waste Line app under the subheading set out tips found in the garbage and recycling tabs. Fourth is the Oxford County website under the existing heading why reduce and reuse subheading community. Fifth is the addition of share stop information and research into educational materials at the New Education Centre and tours provided in Salford. Six is advertising in the What's On Woodstock magazine and on city transit and waste collection vehicle. I will graciously ask council's forgiveness in my error included in today's agenda where it states requiring 100% participation to reduce stops by 50%. When in fact, it would only require 50% participation to meet this goal. In other words, half of households changing the side of their property where waste is collected closer to their neighbors could reduce excuse me, truck stopping by 50%. I feel strongly, this is a small change to ask of anyone who wants to make a difference in Woodstock and Canada's goals to reduce emissions. Going forward, this could translate to lower costs and savings for the city that could eventually be used to incorporate curb compost collection into city services. This would further protect and potentially create jobs within Woodstock through the retrofitting of vehicles, building and servicing facilities to accommodate compost collection. Finally, I would be happy to volunteer my time to work with partners at the city on incorporating research and materials into existing resources. Thank you again for this opportunity. I'm open to questions or suggestions from the mayor and councillors.
Thank you very much, Janet. Questions of council? Councillor Schadenberg?
Thanks a lot to Mayor Trevor Berkshire through our delegation to Janet Norman. As a member of the Environment Advisory Committee for the city, which like I certainly applaud you for this, for this idea, would you like to see this possibly as being something that would be sort of bylaw in the in the in the community or just something that would be stressed amongst the neighborhoods that the neighbors, especially neighbors that get along well can and sort of share their front lawn and and do this. Or again, I guess that's basically the question. Do you think it's something that should be stressed that everybody must do or everybody should do?
Um, I don't think it would necessarily need to become a bylaw for reasons as you stated and examples as you stated. However, even when neighbors don't get along, you can still move where your waste and recycling is to an opposite side of your property or driveway. And it can still accomplish this goal. So in other words, maybe eventually it could be seen into bylaw, but it wouldn't be necessary at the outset, I don't believe. Was that helpful?
Thank you. Further questions of council? Further questions of council? Seeing none. Thank you very much coming forward with this idea. And I think that just by your example that you gave in your own neighborhood, it's something that the friendly city could strongly encourage others to participate in. I think of so many of the neighborhoods where that boulevard and the city allowance in front of the street would quite accommodate this very easily. So thank you very much and we'll deal with that when we get to consideration of delegations.
Thank you.
And our next item on the agenda, we have, let's see, we have Greg, Bill and Tim. So Greg Gokel, Bill Tandon and Tim McCullough regarding the plans for three eighty-five Dundas Street. Welcome.
Welcome. Hi, my name's Tim McCullough. Good afternoon. I'm going to speak first on behalf of HOC Holdings, Inc. I am a lawyer at Harrison Pensa in London and I act on behalf of HOC Holdings, Inc. And also Phoenix Conception Group, Inc. Firstly, I just want to thank the mayor, council and city staff for allowing us the opportunity to speak this afternoon. I'm joined today with the managing director of HOC, Bill Tandon and HOC's project coordinator, Greg Golko. As you may be aware, HOC is requesting one final extension in respect of the construction project relating to three eighty-one dash three eighty-seven Dundas Street here in Woodstock. It's, this, this project has had a checkered past mainly because of HOC. By way of background information, HOC purchased the property in twenty sixteen with a view to building a four-story building, housing twenty-seven affordable housing units for rent. From the beginning, HOC's operations were directed by a gentleman Vernon Martin. Under Mr. Martin's direction, HOC acknowledges quite clearly that there was no, little or no reporting. However, most importantly, to the city, little or no progress occurred with respect to the project. I've seen the project on the website and I've also driven by it and it's awful. We acknowledge that. In any event, the actions to date for HOC during Mr. Martin's tenure was, was really unacceptable and we acknowledge that. It, it should also be noted that a good portion of the delay was actually outside of HOC's control. The environmental consultant which it retained was unable to obtain a record of site condition from the environment, the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change. In fact, HOC takes the position that the two previous extensions, which were granted by the city stemmed from the fact that the environmental consultants did not provide the MOE with the proper information. It wasn't until early twenty nineteen that Mr. Martin commenced discussions with a gentleman, Mr. Tandon, who is with us today about the project. He indicated he needed help. And after Mr. Tandon reviewed the project, he decided to become involved. And he in fact purchased the shares in HOC with his holding company. With his management team, Mr. Tandon has become directly involved with submissions to the MOE for the record of site conditions. In fact, when dealing with the MOE, it was learned that our environmental consultants had filed their last submission with three, with nine administrative errors. And once the MOE offices continued their application reviews following our slowdown during the pandemic, Mr. Tandon was able to assist in the final, finalization of the record of site condition application. It's ready to go now and the process is, it takes eight weeks to finalize. In addition, as managing director, Mr. Tandon initiated negotiations with Reed Heritage Homes. A builder with significant track record of over forty years. The proposed project would now contain six stories with twelve affordable renting rental units and thirty-four affordable units for sale and two ground level commercial units, but that can be changed as the county or the city requires. Reed's heritage homes are on board, subject to satisfying the conditions with respect to the site record of site condition and the site plan approval by the city. The site plan for the project was submitted and the conditions received, which HOC believe they can satisfy. Just want to stress in the, just the last ten months and through the slowdown caused by COVID, HOC has rectified the issues with the MOE, filed, received comments to its site plan, sorry, initiated and received a construction term sheet from Reed's, commissioned and received architectural engineering drawings and commenced this development for a marketing, for marketing the project. Lastly, HOC has reviewed the report of Mr. Magar, I hope I pronounced that correctly, who is asking that council reject our request for this final extension. If HOC has granted the extension, HOC believes it can meet the timelines provided in Mr. Magar's report subject to any second or third wave of the pandemic, which would obviously lessen our opportunity to obtain workers and supplies. The one item in his report that we could not accept is the fact that he requires that we remove all encumbrances. And in fact, moving forward, there should be no encumbrances on title. We're talking about a thirteen million dollar project. And I guess I would suggest that HOC and in fact, any builder developer would be able, would not be able to complete a thirteen million dollar project without some sort of construction financing. So in ending, HOC has turned the corner. If they can get this one last extension, they are confident that they will get this project done. It will no longer be an eyesore in the city of Woodstock and it'll be something that the city and county would be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of council? Counselor Lutter.
Thank you through the mayor to Tim. Could you tell me, we have, we have had, and you know this, that we've had all kinds of complaints and the businesses around. And actually, we just got one today again about the, the conditions of things there. Is there, and this is going to take a while if we do allow this extension. It's going to take a while before anything happens there. And the fencing that's around there is not secure. And of course, there's people and there's different things that's going on in, in that area. And it's very scary for the people that live in that area. And also the garbage and things that seem to get dumped there. There's vermin and debris that's all around. Is there, are you intending or not you yourself, but are the, the people responsible for this, are they going to put a, a secure fence around the place? So that like this, if this goes on until June or approximately then, we're still going to go through all the mess that we've had over the years. So I just wondered if you can answer any of those questions.
I, I believe Mr. Tandon is available to discuss and answer that question.
Hello, let me put my video on. Hi, good morning. Thank you for taking our time for this. Through the mayor, I'd like to respond to the councillor's question. We assume the project, we lately, about two months ago, in terms of direct involvement, we are certainly aware of the, the site conditions. We have approached the contractor and the contractor has given us a quote for putting new hoardings on and new boards on and secure the scaffolding and then around it. And that should be, that, subject to what we, what we can do here, that should be no more than ten days, less than ten days to have it fully put up. We understand there's safety concerns and issues with the, with the current site and we will be securing it and to the satisfaction. We've been speaking with, I think it's Craig Wallace from Building Department. And we've submitted to him what we're planning to do. We're waiting for some response. But I can assure you that there's, there's some action already done. I'm happy to submit to you exactly the plan to, to, to take this forward. Subject to where we go today. I hope that answers that question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Fraser.
Thank you, your worship. And I'm not too sure which one of you wanted to tackle this, but some of the neighboring properties just became aware of, of your intentions and projects. There is some concerns from the owners of neighboring buildings about the size of the intended structure, engineering and snow load that might affect them and their businesses. Do you have any plan to have some discussions with the neighbors of the property to resolve some of those concerns, which also includes what councillor Lutter has brought up? This deplorable site conditions have been like that for years and other issues related to drug addicts, homeless, vermin and, and that. Is there some intention to alleviate concerns of, of the neighbors?
Thank you. Yes, through the mayor. We have been in touch with the neighbor, I believe Vernon put me in touch with the, I believe it's a chocolate retail store right next door. Yes, we were in touch with the owner. In fact, we had, we had conversations, our potential joint venture to allow us to have further units. We do, we do know of the issues of the snow loading. Andrea Hatcher, the planner, had sent us the requirements. Our engineer has addressed it. We have submitted the plan to the planning department about six weeks ago that talks about it. And if there's any further concerns, there's also some underpinning requirement. The engineers, the structural engineers have been looking at it. And our plan is within the guidelines. It is six stories. It is within zoning. It complies. The only issue we're having right now, and we've received comments from all the departments. There was a deadline of October twenty seventh. Andrea has forward, I'd like to bring Greg on. Greg is our consultant, is the, the team here is Greg. Greg, could you possibly just, just five seconds, update the response from Andrea and addressing the snow, snow load?
Andrea Hoffler has, has circulated the, our submission to relevant parties at the city and the county. And most of the comments we received are, are routine. And certainly moving forward, we have every, every, our, our plan, our, our process will be according to the feedback that we've, that we've received. In terms of snow loading, it's, in the, 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 this, the, the, the space is available. The land area is, is, does not present any major issues in terms of the, the zoning utilities, we've, we, yeah, we received feedback from, from each department and we're, we're ready to move ahead according to that feedback. If there's further feedback that, that continues to come. We're, we, we want, the bottom line is we want a project that's both legally compliant and going to serve the needs of the community as best as possible. You know, we've come in a little bit recent despite the years of history. But we want to move forward, you know, in a way that puts the past behind us and really, you know, ultimately in the near term, has a site that's going to be, you know, not causing problems or issues for the neighbors and in the long term, producing a building that is, that is going to be, everybody around is going to be happy with.
Thank you. Counselor Fraser.
Thank you, worship. Just to continue, continue on. I'm trying to recall from my memory, but how many apartment units you're talking about? But along with the apartment units, parking always seems to be an issue. So what are, is the plans to provide adequate parking for tenants if this project goes ahead?
Yes, let me answer that. The, as you may be aware, from the, through the mayor, I'd like to respond to you. As you may be aware, the parking, there's two components. One is the legal requirement and the other is the feasibility of requirement. So yes, the legal requirement is point five units. Our, our contemplation is to have forty-four units total. Now for which we would need twenty-two parking technically. We would like to definitely have a lot more access. So to accommodate for the commercial as well. We have now, I have shared with Andrea as well as perhaps with the Oxford County, a video of a parking system. It's a hydraulic, remote parking system. It is available and it complies with TAAC, which is the, the, the compliant office, the, the Ministry of Safety, Safety Ministry. Greg Wallace knows about the system. We will have forty-five parking units. It'll be a stackable hydraulic system that is operated. So it takes about one-third of the footprint. So there is sufficient parking. It is the additional cost to the developer, but it's something we're going to embed into our, into our program. Allows us ample parking for the, for the tenant and our purchaser and, and the commercial. So again, I'm happy to send you some information on that as well. Go ahead.
Thank you, and your worship in, in the street of Mr. Tandon. I appreciate that. I, I assume this is something that's already in use in Europe and where land is a more
Exactly.
feasible thing.
And Toronto, and Toronto. Yeah, it's in Toronto. Lots, there's four, the, the developers, if I may extend it. The manufacturer is German manufacturer, close, close multi-park. They're the, they're, they're the leader in this. It was our inception right from the beginning because we knew we needed parking, not more for sellability and for tenants. So we, we approached them and, I'm sorry. We approached them and they gave us a plan. It is part of our parcel of our submission to the planning department. It's included in part of our submission to them and it describes it, it details it, it specs it out and it complies. And it's very efficient and it's, it's safety. It's costly, but we'll have more than enough parking.
If I could just continue on with a little bit, your worship. So with this parking system, would it rely on electricity? And if so, what is the event of electrical failure? Will there be some backup generators? The last thing I think our staff want to hear about is the fact that they can't get their car out of the elevator.
Yes, no, it is, it is electricity, but it's backed up by batteries. There's two backup battery plants with it. So we buy an additional battery pack. There's a, you have two backup battery installed already. And it, it becomes, it toggles from one to the other. The batteries are there and only active when the, when the units are in, in mobility. The battery packs are regenerations. There is additional backup as well. I can get your details on that, but yes, there's ample services. I, I think it's the, the regulator is the same people who regulate the elevators. And they have approved the system. In fact, it's the only one that is TAAC approved. Greg, was it, what was the, the safety, I think TAC? What was the? City, uh, city, um, Greg Wallace had looked at it and we sent it to him. And like I said, Andrea has a part of our submission. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Acioni.
Thank you, your worship. Um, uh, I'm, I'm gonna mirror a lot of, uh, my fellow counselors' concerns in my two terms. This has certainly been the, probably the number one location where I've got the most complaints about, um, by residents as well as, uh, people just stopping into the city, looking at eyesores and, uh, obviously the businesses around there. So, uh, this is a tough one, though I am excited about any kind of, you know, a thirteen million dollar investment is great, but, um, going to the affordability of it all, uh, parking was my major concern. So thanks, Counselor Fraser, for, uh, going into that. What kind of rents, like, my understanding initially to this was you're building affordable homes. Now we're putting elevators in for their vehicles. Obviously, it doesn't sound like it's going to be a very affordable home for majority. So have we looked at costs and what the rent's gonna be and, and everything else? Like, how, how does this fit into affordability at all? It, it's gotta be extremely expensive. Uh, I guess, Bill, you can answer this.
Thanks for the question. It's very, you're, you're quite correct. It is a concern for everybody. Uh, let me tell you through the mayor. Uh, let me just inform you, we are compliant with the CMAC regulations. In order to, to have affordability, there is a funding mechanism, which CMAC has already advanced us partly. We must be compliant, otherwise CMAC will not fund us. So the, the current formula with CMAC is twenty percent below market rents. We must be and market rents escalate and change. The current, um, Greg maybe can help me. The current target for market rents is a pro, I think for one bedroom is nine hundred dollars and that's the target rent. So possibly, now they've changed, CMAC adjusted, and that includes gross rent. Right? Not heat and hydro. So any parking facility is absorbed by the developer. So ongoing maintenance and whatnot, we, we're absorbing it. We, we have to take care of that. We are the owners of the building. The management to, to run this has to be, but will not be passed through to the tenant. Um, the budget calls for it. Um, the installation is within our thirteen million dollar budget. The cost to install it, the cost to install includes a two-year maintenance program, which is mandatory by T A C. We must have a two-year warranty. It's every four months, they come in and do, uh, up, upgrade or update to the batteries and they make sure the batteries are functional. And they're right here in Toronto, like the, the, uh, the installer, right here in, in Toronto. They could make calls. Uh, I'm, I'm dealing directly with the owner of the installer. So, um, it is a concern. I, I totally appreciate that. But we are proceeding with the same model as CMAC requires. So we are mandated. It's not, it's not discretionary what we want to charge. In order for a CMAC or Oxford County to be involved, we must adhere to that, that contract. Uh, you may be aware, there is a CMAC contract which we are, when we, when we took over H O C, we had to inherit that contract, which says we must, and we have to report to them every year. There is a, actually every tenant has to be reported and what they pay. There's a qualification for the tenant to go in there. Um, so it's not discretion to us. It's not discretion to the market. We cannot change the rent. It's required by, by the existing contract, which is registered on title.
So that brings up another thing, if I may, through the mayor, um, the ongoing cost of this. So forgetting the next two years or even maybe even five years, um, as many landlords can attest, you know, it, it's ten years down the road where you start having to replace stuff and, you know, fifteen years and everything else. We're talking about some huge expensive machinery and batteries and everything else. Like, I, I just, uh, maybe because of the, the history of this site and, and, and with the ownership and, you know, not even be able to put up proper fencing, I just have troubles thinking down the road of needing batteries and, and, and everything else to make residents happy there. I've just, uh, got a lot of concerns with this, this size. You know, parking being just, just one of them, of course, but.
I get it. I understand. As I said earlier, the, the ownership stays with us. Um, we, so the past ownership was a different owner. We took over the site. We've, we've now assumed it as of, uh, uh, six months ago. We're now taking on the management. Greg and I got hands-on involved and dealt directly with M O E. We, we are, we're not depending on the consultant. So by doing that same strategy, we are no longer depending on anybody else to do this. We're gonna do this ourselves. Apart from, yes.
Unfortunately, in the last six months, we've still got numerous complaints about the site. It hasn't stopped six months ago. So there's, there's still some concerns about the site and everything else of making this a priority. So, but anyways, I'll, I'll stop there. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, your worship. This may take a few minutes. Um, and I'm glad that Mr. Tandon, um, um, I was going to ask how long he'd actually been involved, because I was thinking, or I was under the impression it was only the last two months, but you just said that you've been involved for the last six months.
Well, we've taken, let me just, sorry, let me just address that. We've been hands-on with M O E since September, since the last rejection. We got a rejection from, um, M O E in September. That's when we took full time. Greg was retained in September as we took full time. I'm not trying to, uh, distract it. Uh, I'm not trying to bury the other people, but, um, you could see the emails and the package were together. They only come out from M O E in September.
How long have you been involved with H O C?
H O C, we invested in H O C would have been in, in, uh, June of two thousand nineteen. But we allowed, uh, uh, the previous owner to continue. We were the investor. We were, we were silent investors at that time.
Okay, so, um, as you were, so, uh, Mr. Martin was the sole owner of H O C, was he not?
I believe he had a partner by the name of Adam, um, Woodhouse. There was a partner, again.
Okay, so when, uh, they made their application to, um, the county of Oxford for the Affordable Housing Fund, it would have been just in H O C with those two being, uh, the only, um, people involved. So when talking, and that was, we've already, um, forwarded, um, just under five hundred thousand dollars to H O C, under obviously just the dual ownership. Um, and I'm, I know that, um, most of that money has been expended on, uh, getting the site prepared, demolition, and doing some of this stuff. So they're still, um, they were approved for just under, um, or just over nine hundred thousand dollars, but, um, for the affordable housing portion of it, but that was, um, to H O C. And I don't know if, um, how the agreement is. And I, from my understanding, since the ownership has changed and gone forward, nobody has, um, made the director of, um, social services aware of the changes or who the partners are working, because he has to go back to the ministry. So I was in my discussions with him, um, very recently. And I was telling him that when the application first was made, I believe that there was twenty-four affordable units that were being, um, projected to be built on that site. And that's why it became, uh, a good investment for the county to afford this money from the Affordable Housing Fund. But now you've gone from twenty-four to twelve. So you're changing the contract that you've made for this funding. So have you bothered to check to see whether you need to pay back the five hundred thousand that we've already forwarded to you? That you might not be able to get the other money?
Yes, uh, you must be aware of Paul Beaton.
That's who I was speaking with.
And Jamie, yes. Paul Beaton, I spoke, uh, three days ago. Uh, he's well aware and he's always been apprised. Jamie Stevens was the previous, um, representative. We reported to her. She, uh, called me, um, you know, way back in June and I said to her, we are dealing with the A and E. I reported to her about A and E, all the progress. So to answer your question shortly, um, through the, through the, uh, mayor, of course, um, in short, we have always been in contact with Paul. Um, there has been communication. Paul is aware of the reduction. Uh, he was aware, I believe it was twenty units that they had agreed to in writing, and he knows about the new plan before we submitted it. Uh, they're both aware of the, of this, the system and the design. They, they had called me directly and emailed me, uh, about what we're, uh, moving forward. And, um, we, we are, you know, we are, they're, they're, they know exactly what we're gonna do. Um, we, we, we have their blessing. I spoke to Rebecca, took over Rebecca Jones, I believe. Rebecca just took over Jamie's position. We talked to Rebecca. They, they give us, we have emails and communication. They're supporting our new plan. They're aware of the new plan with, uh, thirty-two, uh, twelve rental units.
Okay, so I just got off the phone with Mr. Beaton prior to this meeting and he said that he, um, before they could, um, transfer any more money or go forward, they would have to check with the ministry to see if the ministry now thought that going from the twenty, um, affordable units down to the twelve is still a feasible, um, project to invest in. But that's something that can be checked. I just, it just doesn't sound like there's a lot of communication going on and I'm kind of disappointed to find out that you've been involved in this, um, since June of two thousand and nineteen. Now, maybe you're only, um, as, um, financial backing, but I, I'm assuming that that you took over the lead on, in the H O C company. So with all the complaints that we've received about the property, it wasn't until just a few weeks ago that there was actually a little bit of cleanup done. Like, it, that's, that site has been an eyesore from the moment it started. And, you know, the, the con, the, having the scaffolding up on the main street has caused so much concern for the community. Like, it's not, um, I guess I'm disappointed, because you sound like you have all your ducks in a row, but that you didn't, you know, come down and look at the site and say, gee, if I was living in the city of Woodstock, I sure wouldn't want this to look this way. And when complaints go forward for the fact that we've had all the troubles with garbage, um, some of our homeless people using the site, and then it was being used to store some vehicles and it did some different things. So, I mean, like, when you live in the community, you hear and you see a lot of different things. I have to say, though, when you said that Reed Heritage Homes is involved with you now, there are the project managers that are going to be taking over this site?
They'll be the construction manager, meaning they are the accountability of, if I can speak to, I'll let you finish the question.
Oh, I was just gonna say, while you, while I was listening to the discussion, I looked up their website and it's very impressive. Very, very impressive. They are showing, um, different developments in Air, wealth, Paris. They're a Cambridge company. So, I mean, they look wonderful. They look like this is not, would not be their first job. This would be something that they've done. And, I mean, they've been around for forty years. So they have a great history. They're probably, I mean, it looks very encouraging. So they're definitely on board. Is that correct?
On board. Uh, I spoke, I met with Eric Smith, who's a president of, so Reed Heritage Home has two divisions. There's a building division and the construction management division. They're related sister companies. I met with Eric Smith back in June and said to Eric, I'm about to take lead on this. Pandemic hit a, a little bit in, in January, February, and Eric has responded to me recently. Uh, I've informed him about the M O E issue that's been resolved now. Uh, they've prepared and I've, I've included in my package, um, a term sheet, uh, of the C C D C contract in which we propose, and, and there is not, we're not, we're not saying our accountability is in, in front of you. The accountability of Reed, who's been around for a long time, their experience, uh, their ability to deal with any issues. I would propose this and, and Tim's, to differ to Tim's, uh, advice, that we allow full transparency and accountability defer right to Reed, meaning anything the city would like to do, whether depending on myself or Greg on accountability and timelines, we have you directly. And Reed would be directed to com- communicate with the city to let you know. I, I could promise you and I could tell you we'll do this in six months or nine months or twelve months. I would like to have the person, the, the company that's been delegated, that we pay for to build it. They know the project. Uh, they've got a project exactly like this in Ire, exactly the one you talked about, uh, Adam. Um, and it's a six-story similar project. We spoke about it two weeks ago. And he's excited. Eric is the, is the president. They're excited to get started. They just want to know when can we do it? I haven't gone through all of the details with them or where we are. Uh, I hope to get a positive response today or soon and to go back to them.
I, unfortunately, when you go on the website, if I might continue, your worship, uh, when you go on the website, unfortunately, it only shows the floor plans. It doesn't show the actual building, but then I've only had a few minutes to do all these searches and I'm doing them on my phone while still trying to pay attention. So, I'm, I'm curious.
The building is there, the, the one in Ire?
Well, I mean, I saw the site, but I only saw the floor plans of the actual apartment unit. So I didn't see the building itself, but I'm sure it's there. If, when I have a chance, I'll go further.
Yeah, Buzz Buzz Home. You'll find the renderings on that site for that project.
Buzz Buzz Home, yes. We're happy to share all of it. Like I said again, I'll, I'll iterate. Reed would be fully transparent and open and we'll direct them to respond and give you a timeline, because the timelines are post-pandemic. We, we're not suggesting we're not gonna deal with them. It's, even they tell us, Bill, at this point, we can give you some timelines, but it will be directly dependent on the supply lines.
Okay, your worship, if I could just ask one more question through Mr. Tandon. Um, you were a part of Phoenix, was that correct?
Initially, yes, from Toronto.
Yeah, I tried to, um, search that out and I, but didn't come up with anything, but, um, how long has it been established and can you, um, have you done projects of this magnitude of, or, or of this type? Can you, can you give me some examples?
Sure, I've been at Phoenix for us in two thousand thirteen. Um, it's primarily the investment, uh, consortium, uh, not a construction. We invest in construction projects. Uh, we are not publicly trading, nor do we have a public visibility. It's private money. Um, we only invest in small projects. So a project in Whitby, there's a current project. I'm happy to share the Whitby project with, uh, anybody concerned. We'll, we'll put the packs together. The current project we are doing is in Fort Erie. Um, so the developer, we are working with the city to develop lots. There's nine hundred units to be had in Fort Erie. It's a large project. It's a ten-year project. We're involved. Is it one of six other investment firms in that project? And we're taking, we're taking that project from draft stage right into, um, site plan approval. So pre-construction, we are now proposing to sell that project to builders. So it's a little different than this one. This is a smaller project. I got involved only to the extent that I thought it was ready and just waiting for M O E. I've learned new things. I'm not, again, trying to bury anybody. Uh, I've learned new things from previous owners. I didn't know the extent of the M O E issues. I wasn't aware of all of the, um, um, requirements. Um, but we are here. Uh, I, I, we can, we can take it forward, um, with your help.
Okay, I did find you then, because I think I did find the investment part of it, but I didn't, I didn't, couldn't find any of the projects. Thank you very much. You've given me a lot of, um, extra things to think about.
Thank you, Counselor Acioni.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, through to Bill, I'm curious why Reed isn't here with us today then? Um, and, and I guess asking that, have you got a signed contract with them? Have they come back? You know, have you, have you got a signed agreement with them?
We have a letter of intent, which is included in the, in the email. There's an email by, by Eric included in my package. We, um, I'd like to resolve this. This is an issue that we need to resolve first. We have a notice that's been, that's been given to us in September. Um, I wanted to make sure that we're going forward. We got the, we heard the recommendations that there's a recommendation that their extension should not be granted. Um, you know, we, we wanna make sure that we do this productively for everybody. Um, I can assure you that Reed is on board and they're waiting for us. So they're, they're, they are not looking to, they want projects. That, that's their business. They're mandated to get projects. There's no issue, there's no issues for them to say, no, we don't want it. They, I mean, there's, I think, an email by Eric in the, in the package suggesting this is exactly the project. Nice looking building, I believe it says, like an iron, very similar. It's in my package. So it's, this is maybe three weeks ago. So, welcome to coming.
Concerns, my concerns are strictly that if, if you were to get an extension, of course, uh, going with somebody else. I, I mean, that's, I guess that's where my disappointment lays, that we're so late into this game that, you know, I, I would have hoped, you know, you came with, with everybody on board, sign dotted, ready to go, and then let's do it, because there's still so many question marks concerned. Because I was looking at some of the costing too, that it's, it's a very significant, uh, investment. I understand that.
So you, you have to understand practicality of business. Um, I would be irresponsible to my investments to sign a contract not having a resolution to this matter. I mean, that's the practicality is not knowing where we're going, we could not sign a contract. That would be irresponsible for me, for my That would be irresponsible for me for my investments. Um, where we're here and, and as soon as you give us a go ahead and we, Tim's got some other issues that he needs to address regarding the encumbrances. We need to deal with those because although we're an investment firm, my, my, my group will not invest in a, uh, project that they do not have allowance, that they have a un, uh, restricted covenants on.
So then you certainly, uh, understand my position because I have the responsibility, of course, to make sure everything's in place and on board and with the history, especially of the site, that this is where I have a lot of concerns, but okay.
Yeah, I think Tim, Tim might be able to, uh, help with that. Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Talbot.
Sorry, your worship, I fibbed. I just thought of another one question through to Mr. Tannen. Maybe you can help me. Um, if we were to give you a thirty-day extension, what could you do for us? As far as proving to us that you are on board, this is happening, like how, what can you pull together in thirty days?
Well, you mean that like a, like a preliminary due diligence extension? Well, we can't get any permits. So I, I, I just may qualify your question. I believe you're asking to give you, um, some, some, uh, sort of, um, um, understanding of what we're going to do. Not, we, we cannot get a permit. We cannot get the regular site condition in thirty days. There's some things we cannot do. It's not beyond our control. But what I'm able to do is, uh, show you that Reed is interested and is committed to the project. To show you that we are, we are moving forward and with Paul Beaton and the ministry, that they are on board with us. Um, we, I spoke to Rebecca. Rebecca's, uh, knows the plan and Rebecca told me directly on the phone, I believe Rebecca even spoke to Tim that they're, they're in support of our, our proposal. So we can certainly qualify that and make sure there, all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. Uh, furthermore.
You've had a lot of questions. You've had a lot of stuff that's been put out there today. So I mean, I think that in order for council to feel confident, I mean, because we felt confident, um, with Vernon in the beginning, Mr. Martin, you know, we came forward and, you know, we felt confident. We kept giving him the extensions. Now, we're sort of about the end of the, the plan and everybody's lost their confidence. Um, the faith and probably their patience because we've all had to endure all the complaints and, um, excuses of why the property sat and is sitting the way it is sitting. Well, that's what I'm looking at. So in, um, I'm thinking in, in thirty days, I would like to hear from the contractor who's putting up new fencing and that, yeah, as soon as you, or even in two weeks, if you want two weeks, because you said you could have it there in ten days. Have that site cleaned up. So this is what I'm looking. I want something that guarantees myself, council and the city of Woodstock, that we're not gonna have to deal with any more of these issues and, and just have it, it, it sit there. I guess that, that's the, the biggest thing.
You deserve all of that.
Fair to you, I'm sorry, because I realize you've come on board after the.
No, 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 no. It is, it is, it is fair. Uh, when I came on, I knew I ought to have known. I didn't know, I ought to have known. I took on responsibility. So it is fair and, uh, I'll defer to Tim on the logistics of committing to, to Reed or if it's a letter of intent without conditions. And so hoarding all of the things, we'll, we'll defer with, to Tim a bit on that, um, about the logistics of that, if you could, Tim.
Yeah, I, um, I don't want to put, uh, words in Bill's mouth, obviously, but uh, I am confident that they would have the site fenced properly and cleaned up well within thirty days. That wouldn't be an issue. Um, I, I believe we can get a, 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 an agreement with Reed's without any problem, but it would obviously have to be conditional upon a full extension, uh, being provided by the city. Um, you know, I, I know, uh, counselor, I'm sorry, Angione, I, I'd like to say, but it's, I know it's, I butchered it a bit. I apologize. Um, you know, to, for us, it was, it, it's, it's kind of premature to have Reed sit at the table with us here today. Um, as much as we would have liked to, but they, they also don't want to put all their time, money and effort into something that they don't know is going to happen. Um, if we say you've got thirty days, I, I'm to get an agreement in place, uh, conditional upon proper extensions. We're gonna have to have encumbrances. We're gonna have to have construction financing. We, we can do that. I'm, I'm convinced without a doubt that Bill will get that done.
Okay, so if, if we say you have thirty days to prove to the, us that this is gonna happen, if, in order, if you get and you only need the extension till June thirtieth, is that correct? That would still be, because right now, that's what the ask was for, was for an extension to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. That was to secure a building permit.
Oh, well, well, we expect to have a building permit by June of twenty twenty-one. Heavens, I mean.
Okay.
I would hope so.
Well, 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 well.
That was what the recommendation originally was. It said, should council wish to support an extension, we would give, or if that the, they come Woodstock City Council endorse an extension to June the thirtieth. So that's what I'm asking. And then it would followed by building completion as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. And, um, that was the part two as well, about the future, uh, financial encumbrance and be removed from three eighty-one.
Right.
That's the issue, that's the issue we're gonna have is about the financial encumbrances and, and the restricted covenant. That's the only thing, Tim, maybe you can speak to.
Okay, but in thirty days, you could bring us something that would make us feel a lot more confident than we have the last four years.
Yes, you, you'll have, you'll have, uh, a point form, actual letters. I, I would like to have uh, a conversation with, with, uh, with you again, if we can, the next meeting to bring Reed on because they'll be fully aware and let them know, that lets you know that they are, they're committed to the project. The hoarding, the fencing, we cleaned up in less than ten days. We've already have the contractors. Again, we're waiting to see where we go here. Uh, the encumbrances is something we will, we'll let Tim address that in a, in a, in a, in the correspondence to show you our concerns with that. And, and to justify our concerns with that.
And I, I would add that, uh, when we get to the staff report under item E three, our, uh, C A O would be able to, uh, offer an explanation on our position regarding those encumbrances. So uh, make sure you, uh, either stay on the, uh, stream or go back after the meeting and take a look at that section as well. Uh, further discussion of council. Counselor Shadenberg.
Yeah, through the, uh, mayor too, I guess Bill Tandon would be able to probably answer this question best. With the thirty-two units therefore being, being a condo are not affordable housing units, would they be eventually put up for sale as, as condominium? Individual condominium holdings for, for people to purchase? And the twelve remaining would, would, you know, the twelve affordable housing units would therefore stay with H O C holdings?
Yes, the H O C holding has to stay with the twelve. Although they're for sale, we will still comply with the C M A C affordable regular, uh, model. They do have another mortgage program. See, Missy's got many affordable housing mor- programs. They will give, um, um, the current program that Jamie and Rebecca are supporting is one allows a ten thousand dollar forgivable loan. Uh, but it needs to be under a certain amount. Um, so we, we wanna be able to comply with that and make this, and, and although it's for sale, it still be, our target, the number I believe is three hundred thousand, Greg? I think Greg, uh.
Larger units a bit above that mark, starting with that mark. It'll be, uh, it'll be per, on a perfect square foot basis, it will be one of the most, uh, competitively priced, well-priced, uh, build, buildings, condo buildings in, uh, Western Ontario, uh, in quite some time.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Seeing none. Thank you very much and we'll move along on our agenda. So, uh, now we're consideration of delegations. And the first one would be for the request to temporarily place cameras in public trails. And looking for a motion, Counselor Agioni.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I move the Woodstock City Council approve the request from Laura Ellington for a temporary exemption from municipal code chapter six, six, five, section four point one, subsection fourteen for a period of thirty days in order to record video to aid in finding a lost dog. And further that the exemption be applied only to the areas of stormwater management pond north of Lansdowne Ave and Halifax Road, Les Cook Park. The stormwater management pond and trail system along King Fisher Avenue, including Trevor Slater Park and the Finch Woodlot. And further that all sign.
And actually, I'll just interrupt for a second. So she had indicated that there would be five, uh, locations. We've covered four there. Uh, the fifth location would be along South Pittot Trail, if you'd like to add that in, Counselor Agioni.
Of course, and add South Pittot Trail. Thank you for that. And further that all signage, video destruction, location security and other requirements deemed appropriate be met to the satisfaction of city staff.
Thank you. Is there a second or a council major discussion? Uh, Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, your worship. I'm just, um, assuming that the last line of that motion means that our city staff will, um, I'm sure that Laura will be letting the city staff know where all the cameras are and be sharing that information for them as they move the cameras. Is that my understanding?
That would be correct and, uh, that'll involve, uh, both our parks department as well as our clerks department. Further discussion, Counselor Lauder.
Thank you. Through the mayor to Mr. Connors. Um, I just wondered if Laura has been in contact with yourself or the Parks Department regarding this and if you could, um, speak to, um, anything in the privacy act that could possibly come back on the city of Woodstock or, and also if this would be precedent setting for, uh, future requests.
All right, your worship, through to the counselor's question. Um, our park supervisor has been, uh, in contact, uh, with, uh, Laura. Um, and they've discussed, uh, the, uh, um, the request over email, um, as has, uh, the city clerk. Um, as far as privacy goes, um, um, we should be able to meet the privacy, uh, standards of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Um, so that should be okay. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to do this. Um, the, uh, the other part of that question is, is as far as is this precedent setting? Will there be other requests? I, I can't answer that, but if there was other requests, they would have to go through the same process that, um, this person has gone through. Um, because, um, the activity, like this is under the bylaw, the parks bylaw that's under activities prohibited. And this is a council bylaw, so only council can kind of suspend, uh, a council bylaw. Staff cannot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimously. Uh, next one for consideration is the sharing a stop for waste and recycling. Counselor Fraser.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, that Woodstock City Council received the quest, request from Janet Norman regarding sharing a stop for waste and recycling collection. Um, and refer to, uh, staff or report.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Agioni. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And we do not need one for the, uh, uh, last allegation. We'll deal with that when we get to the reports. Um, so next up is, uh, consideration of planning reports and we have the provincial, uh, direction regarding additional residential units and looking for, uh, a mover and a seconder to get that on the floor. So Counselor Lauder will move and Counselor Agioni will second. Go ahead, Counselor Lauder.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council, um, direct staff to initiate a review of the current legislative policy framework with a view to updating the policies of the official plan and the provisions of the city's zoning bylaw with respect to additional residential units and authorized city staff to initiate, initiate an official plan amendment for the purpose of implementing amendments to the O P and city zoning bylaw regarding additional residential units.
Thank you. And, uh, today we have joining us the Director of Planning for Oxford County. Uh, welcome.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, yes, just to, to give you a very brief overview of this and, and certainly answer any questions you might have. Uh, certainly, city is aware that, uh, the province has recently updated, uh, various legislations and policies at the provincial level for the purpose of, uh, facilitating additional affordable housing options in Ontario and the, the additional residential units, uh, is one of those that, uh, that, uh, has been first and foremost on the, in the province's agenda for these things. And I, I suppose that, uh, what this report is intended really to do is kind of the, it's the details. I'm not gonna go through all those details. It's outlined some of those, uh, uh, the kind of the provincial direction on these things. And I would say at this point, the provincial direction, uh, from, from the legislation and policy direction as well as discussions with the provinces, their expectations that these will be broadly applied policies, which is to say that they expect that, that additional residential units being, uh, second or additional units inside si- single detached, semi-detached and even townhouse development, uh, as well as, uh, units in accessory structures that are accessory to those types of units. Uh, will be broadly in, in the sense that they will be permitted almost as of right with the exception that, uh, you know, areas that would be subject to constraints around natural heritage or natural features such as flooding or, uh, you know, servicing constraints if there's areas in your communities that are known to be uh, deficient in servicing, that wouldn't be able to support these sorts of things. But otherwise, the expectation is that they broadly applied. So we, uh, at this point, uh, many municipalities across Ontario have embarked on that exercise. Uh, we, at the county, we're going to do that more broadly county-based, but, uh, in being aware of that, uh, the city of Woodstock has received numerous applications over the last several months, uh, in this area that we felt it was important to, uh, to move the, the, the project they had for, uh, more, more quickly in Woodstock. Certainly anything we, we do, the work that will be done, uh, that, uh, if directed to do so by council, uh, will be certainly, uh, we can transfer that use, that work to, to the rest of the county at a later date. We felt that it was important to initiate this project now and that's why the recommendation is here in front of you. Uh, the report does include a number of, uh, items for rationale about where the, you know, why these additional units are important for provision of affordable housing. Uh, it also includes a number of, uh, in the planning analysis section, the area that speaks to, uh, the, uh, some of the considerations around these things. And I think that's important that, uh, you know, certainly the policies approaching the policy direction, but also looking at the city zoning bylaw provisions uh, more completely, uh, or certainly thoroughly, because, uh, as I think I've indicated in the report is that those zoning provisions in your bylaw are, are have been around for a long time. I mean, and certainly without a lot of, uh, consideration or rationale as to why they exist today. So if they've been around for forty years and, you know, are they still applicable today? And I think a big part of what the implementation of these policies will, uh, will look like will be around being able to provide rationale for lots sizes, to be able to establish those things uh, in, in the general set of provisions and zoning and, uh, policy provisions, uh, that will, uh, both satisfy the province's concerns or, or direction with respect to, uh, providing for additional res- uh, residential units. At the same time, respecting the city's, uh, perspectives on these things as well. I would point out that the actual policies themselves and the zoning provisions that the city would, would, uh, move forward with are not subject to appeal except by the minister. Uh, I'm not exactly sure what that means in terms of whether the ministry would, uh, how interested they'd be in these things, but we certainly want to keep that in mind when we're going through this process. Uh, but our goal is to thoroughly review these, uh, in the context of not only the, the, the county, but look at what other municipalities have been doing to see how they have been satisfying this, uh, this broad provincial directive. And, uh, at the end of my report, I did indicate that, uh, in terms of, I think it's important too, because with a number of applications that you've been dealing with lately, important to note that without, uh, in, with the exception or with the, without any else, thing else in place, it's difficult that, uh, to, to not process these applications. The Planning Act requires that a very, the generally Planning Act applications for zone changes be processed within ninety days of receipt. Uh, so if you decline to deal with an application after ninety days, an applicant does have the right of appeal. Uh, that could happen with or without a council decision on the matter. Uh, what I've suggested in the report is that one option you may wish to look at, uh, not one that we're necessarily recommending, but certainly uh, the implementation of an interim control bylaw that would be, uh, put in place to allow, and that what that does is basically is what I call the neutron bomb of planning. It basically, uh, doesn't allow any further appeals of things that are not, uh, already subject to appeal. Allows municipality to. Allows municipality to step back a little bit from the processing of applications to deal with this specific issue. And then until those amendments are in place, the interim control by would remain in effect. And you can do that for a year. It's not subject to an appeal for that first year. It is an option. Again, in the, I'm not sure that we would actually recommend that to you. I did identify in the report that passing an interim control bylaw for this type of an issue may flag the city's process to the province. But I would suggest to you too, that if you're moving forward and with basically the spirit of the, with the provincial direction is on these matters in terms of developing policies and zoning provisions that, you know, it certainly could be looked at as a, as a, as an option for the city. So those are my comments at this point, your worship, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for the detail that you put forward in this report. Questions of council? Councillor Fraser.
Thank you, worship, and through to Gordon. Gordon, good to see you. Haven't seen that face for a long time. One of my concerns that seems to be coming up that wasn't as much of a problem forty years ago is parking. You know, we seem to have a lot of applications where there's a reduction, a request for a reduction in number of parking places. And every household that seems that has income has two vehicles. Or more. So that's one of the things that, you know, I mentioned in the report, but I think it has to be, might have to be mindful that we have to be more cautious of what we're providing for parking, just as we discussed in the last application. So I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, when this review is going on. I think parking is an issue that needs to be looked at extensively.
Agreed.
Thank you for that, Ron, and of course, not just the parking on the property or where the proposed units are, but as mentioned in the report, reviewing the on-street parking regulations, which hopefully we're not going to see any more snow in the near future. But of course, December first, as a reminder to the public, we have our on-street parking regulations change as well as our overnight parking in city municipal lots taking place. A number of other questions. Let's see, who will we go? We'll go councillor Accioni next.
Thank you, worship. Through to Gordon. Just more in the lines of what councillor Fraser was mentioning. That with parking, like when I read through it and everything else, and I gotta say, I am in favor of this to bring more affordable housing to the city, but parking seems to be going to be the biggest issue. And correct me if I'm wrong, I guess. They have to be able to provide at least one parking spot. If they were to put something in place, there has to be at least one parking spot available to them. And that'll be the biggest rule, I think, going to be our biggest restriction, holding off a lot of people being able to do this. And that's, and I'm in favor of that too. It's just, that is correct, is it not?
Through you, your worship, to the councillor's question, yes, the provincial legislation, and this is right into the Planning Act, not policy, is that each unit will be required to have a parking space. And they can, but they can be tandem spaces. Right now, your bylaw does not allow that. So if you provide a parking space, you can't do it in a way that you're going to block somebody else in. But the new provincial legislation says that you can, that you have to allow for that. The other part of that is that if you're in an area that has reduced or lesser parking requirements in that one space, as I understand the legislation is that you can't impose additional parking beyond that. So if you have an area of the city that someone wants to do one of these things that has no parking requirement, you can't actually impose parking where it didn't exist. So that's, again, these are all, even to councillor Fraser's question, earlier comments, is that these are all part of the review that we will do in certainly in close consultation with your staff and yourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. And I think even under the maintaining neighbourhood character, council has heard from one area in the community where a driveway was made wider than the proportional width for the front edge of the property that was allowed in order to accommodate an illegal separate unit. So it's great to see that you're going to work with our staff to especially look at that neighbourhood character aspect that even, even cover off parking there yet again, and the exterior alterations that could arise. We'll go with councillor Shadenberg, then councillor Talbot.
Yeah, through the mayor to our director of planning at Cordhoff. I guess my concerns, maybe it's putting my old real estate hat back on, is just trying to determine things like, for example, if we have variances that will always be applied to for size of garages or height of garages, et cetera, et cetera. But for example, if we came up with a terminology that said the minimum, as an example, the minimum square footage for a basement apartment would be seven hundred and fifty square feet. All of a sudden, we'd have somebody coming in with a variance saying, well, I can provide seven hundred and thirty square feet in my basement. I just think if we're going to be doing some of this stuff, that I think we should be creating some pretty, not stiff rules, but pretty concrete rules about things like separate hydro and heating services on homes and stuff like that too. Because in many instances, it's going to be an income property where the homeowner doesn't live on the main floor, doesn't live in the lower level, doesn't live on the second floor either. Simply doesn't live there. It's an income property. So everything on the outside of it has to be maintained, or on the inside of it has to be maintained by a landlord who's obviously an absentee landlord, doesn't live there. So I would really be interested in taking a look at what some of these possibilities are going to be coming up. And the other one, I think, for example, a ceiling height in a basement, if it meets a requirement, whether or not there's a basement walkout or not, or the fire code regulations. It really is a long, long list of things to be considered. And we've had more than two cases this year that we've looked at through planning meetings that have been difficult to try to approve, so we obviously did not approve them. And that's kind of where we are today, aren't we? So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, councillor Talbot.
Thank you, worship. I was just going to go back to the parking because they said that it can be considered in tandem in that. But in a few new developments that have occurred recently, they've used quite a large portion of the front yard. And I mean, so is, are these projects still going to address the amount of space that people will have, like outdoor space? Like, I mean, you can only build on a certain percentage of a property. So does, and do those figures change if you're going to be putting two units into it? Is that considered in the calculations?
Through you, your worship, to the councillor's question, that'll be part of the review. Certainly, there are provisions in the bylaw now. I think what our goal would be is to look at all of those provisions with the, with an eye to, you know, today's kind of, what happened forty years ago may not be appropriate for some of those provisions today, but all of those things like amenity space, open space, parking areas, all those things will be part of the consideration. And our goal would be to come up with provisions that are rationalized and modern, so that, you know, they'd be less subject to change. I think the comments that were made by councillor Shadenberg alluded to that same thing, is that people are always going to look at the possibility of trying to amend provisions. But I think the goal is, is at this point, is to try to establish these in a way that they are today's provisions based on today's requirements and today's needs. By establishing something along those lines, making it much more difficult for someone to make the argument that they need to be reduced or changed to a lesser or a greater standard depending upon the circumstances. So the short answer to your question, councillor, is that yes, we want to look at all of those things in tandem and collectively in order to bring forward standards that are appropriate for the city.
I, if I can continue, your worship, I guess I would hope so, because there are so many homes that have garages, but nobody puts their cars in them, they use the driveways. But I've had so many comments made to me by people that they can't believe how many cars are parked on the road. And a lot of time when you have the tandem, if you only have a driveway that holds a tandem parking situation, they park on the street because they don't want to be out having to move in case one has to get out for the other. And if it's a rental thing, this could become quite a situation. So to me, tandem, I don't think it's going to work. And as far as people having these units, how many cars do they own themselves? And it's kind of scary thinking that almost at any time, anybody can start putting units into their house. And I realize that affordable housing is required, but it could become quite an issue going forward.
Thank you, councillor Shadenberg.
Yeah, I guess one more from the mayor through to our director of planning, maybe give us a bit of an education on some of the zonings too. Because we're specifically talking about the R1 zoning and making some flexible changes to it permanently, if we do through our official plan. But for example, on Fairway Road in Woodstock, that's sort of newer subdivision, newer street, there was something called the PUD or a PUD zoning, where there's been many ranches built with two-car garages that are in fact up and down duplexes. But you could drive by the street all day long and not realize they're up and down duplexes. But the original zoning allowed for it versus now where we look at some of our streets in Woodstock that have the R1 zoning, where you say, well, we don't want that to be an up and down duplex. Just a clarification, maybe a bit of an educational explanation on it, Mr. Hough.
Your worship, through you to that, the zone you're referring to, what we call the planned unit development zone, is actually a zone that applies almost exclusively only to the Sally Creek subdivision up in the northwest part of the city. And what it was intended to do when it was applied was basically, instead of having a, like your R1 zone as an example, that has a very set set of provisions for lot area frontage depth, it was intended to be more of a opportunity for almost like a negotiation between the developer and the city as to how development would happen. So instead of saying you can only have this type of unit, or you have to have this much setback, or only this much lot area, that would be open to more discussion and then established through a site plan on the site. Now, we haven't used that in newer, it sounds great and it works in some developments, but for single detached dwellment developments probably not as effective, but certainly for some of the more higher density type things, apartment buildings, townhouses could prove to be very effective. So that's where that came from, and it's not, we're not really intending to apply that. At least at this point, we haven't really had discussions with the city, but certainly over the course of the twenty years I've been here, there's been no discussion about expanding that that planned unit development zone across any other areas of the city where it's not already in place. In terms of the remainder of your question, I mean, the R1 zones, the zoning bylaw by and large implements your policies. And that's where, you know, what we would look at doing is providing kind of a broad policy, flexible policy approach to something that you can implement. And that's getting back to my earlier comments, I'm not going to go through it all again, but, you know, taking that really hard look at your zone provisions and at areas of the city where you'd like to apply those to make sure that you have a sound foundation for those provisions, so that when people come and want to change them, for example, to increase the width of a parking lot in the front yard, that you have a sound rationale in that you've developed recently, that would speak to why you don't want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous, and look forward to seeing where we end up after all of your review and this consultation with our staff and the rest of your staff. Thank you very much. And our next item on the agenda is consideration of correspondence. And we have a letter from the co-chairs of the Southgate Centre Board of Directors, looking for a nomination. And I'd go to councillor Tate.
I'll make the motion that Woodstock City Council appoint councillor Fraser to sit on the Southgate Centre Board of Directors for the term of council, ending November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. And a seconder, councillor Accioni. And councillor Fraser, will you allow your name to stand?
Certainly, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion of council. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. Thank you very much, and look forward to hearing the work of that committee. I know they have a lot of work planned for the future expansion, so it'll be great to have council and the city represented this way formally. And I see our next item on the agenda is the taxi bylaw modification. Looking for a mover, councillor Accioni.
Yes, thank you. Move on myself. The Woodstock City Council refer the request from Kendall Cab regarding the elimination of the requirement for a safety certificate for new vehicles under Municipal Code, Chapter six, four, three, taxi limousine to staff for a report.
Thank you. And seconded by councillor Lauder, discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And our next item on the agenda is the Woodstock Hospital Foundation and the request for signage temporarily for their new initiative for the fifty-fifty draw. Councillor Lauder. And seconded by councillor Shadenberg. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council supports the Woodstock Hospital Foundation's request for temporary advertising signage at the following locations until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Southside Park, Highway fifty-nine and Juliana Drive, downtown Woodstock, Devonshire Avenue and County Road four, Ben Sitterd Avenue and County Road seventeen, Ben Sitterd Avenue and Ingersoll Ave, Ben Sitterd Avenue and Devonshire Ave, Parkinson Road and Oxford Road four, Parkinson Road and Beards Lane, Highway two and Highway fifty-five, Mill Street and Clark Road and Standard Tube Park.
Thank you. Discussion. Councillor Talbot. Or actually, we'll go councillor Lauder first, then councillor Talbot. We'll need your mic on again, councillor Lauder, sorry.
This is the new initiative. It's the foundation in hopes that they can get some extra funding for equipment and much-needed things at the hospital. And they're pretty excited about this. I can't, I can't participate in it, but I hope anyone else, because I'm on the board and that one looked very good if I won. And so, and my family can't even participate. And so I could maybe get someone to participate, have counsel for me, but other than that, I can't do anything. But it sounds really exciting. The board is very excited about this. And hopefully, it's, St Thomas just started this, and it's been very successful there. And there's other municipal, other hospitals that have also. So hopefully, people get out and check it out and go to the website and they can find out all the information on it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Talbot.
Thank you, worship. I'm just curious, there was nothing in the correspondence, but I was wondering if anybody could tell me what the size of the signs that actually were like, are they like election signs that are two by two and they're on the wire stands? Are they on wooden stands or what exactly, or what do they look like?
I, I'm not sure if you heard anything directly, councillor Lauder. I know that my understanding is they would be the same size that we see for the, when we have the Dairy Capital Run or the Terry Fox, so about eighteen inches, that size. But I don't think there was anything formalized, so I think that's just the basic assumption. So not sure if council wants to put a restriction on what the size is. I would hope that it would be nothing that would impact our sight lines or we'll be hearing a subsequent report from our engineering department. Is council fine with the motion, the way it's worded, with that understanding? All right. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And so next up, we have our fees and charges by law with an update. We'll go councillor Shadenberg. And seconded by councillor Fraser. Go ahead, councillor Shadenberg.
Yeah, the Woodstock City Council approved the fees and charges as detailed in the report and that the necessary bylaw be read.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing, oh, go ahead, councillor Shadenberg.
Yeah, I guess through the mayor too, whoever wants to answer the question, might be something the engineering office might have to tackle. Just wanted to confirm, you don't sell advertising on the inside of buses anymore? By looking at the list, it's been scratched off. The list is one of the fees and charges in the city of Woodstock has.
Actually, your worship through the councillor, no, we still sell it, but we don't, we no longer want it to be on the fee bylaw because then that provides us the opportunity to negotiate a price with people who want to advertise. And a lot of times, you know, we need some flexibility because, you know, the price can be different between either time of the year, sometimes there's peaks. And different industries have different peak times when they want to advertise. And also, you know, sometimes we would like to be able to negotiate bulk, bulk programs. So if, you know, we want to give them a bit of a deal, if
Bulk programs. So if, you know, we want to give them a bit of a deal, if, if they want to put it on for a month, you know, that kind of thing. So that's kind of why we want. The, the fee by law was kind of tamper, are restricting us in, in, in order to negotiate those, those price changes.
Thanks for that answer. I certainly want to say some of the bus wraps that we do see are very, very impressive and I, I would say very effective advertising.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next one on the agenda, we have a proposed sale of industrial land. Looking for a mover, uh, councillor Fraser and a seconder councillor Accione. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. That Woodstock City Council authorized the mayor and clerk to sign an agreement of purchase and sale with. Two, six, two, eight, four, three, six, Ontario Inc. And that the necessary Bible be read.
Thank you. And, uh, uh, for the people following along at home, when you hear about Ontario Incorporated numbers. Uh, one thing that's included here in the report today is that, uh, this is a company we've dealt with, uh, a couple of times in the past and they've. Successfully received tenants in their other buildings, so, um. They're, uh, familiar to the friendly city, uh, discussion of council. And. Oh, councillor Schadenberg.
Yeah, I guess from the mayor through to our, our development commissioner, I believe Len Magg, yours with us this afternoon. I, I guess just looking at, at specifically the direct, uh, area, the geographical area of the city, what's the, this, uh. Plan project is for, because it's, it's one of these spots of, of what's the Griffin Way, Woodall Way that. Has really seemed to become very popular in the last, uh, twelve months. Maybe you can describe exactly, uh, where this location is that the, the, this company is going to be building on.
Thank you, your worship through the councillor Schadenberg. This property is located at the northwest corner. Of Seagrave Road in Woodall Way. So as was mentioned earlier, this group has already built a couple of small buildings in the city. And they're looking to build a third. They've had tremendous success in terms of attracting tenants. And so that's why they want to build this third building, but, uh, uh, it's pretty much the last piece that we have along, uh, Seagrave Road available for sale.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous and, uh, the tender results for ninety-seven Mill Street. And we'll go with councillor Accione and, uh, councillor Fraser.
Thank you, worship. Move that Woodstock City Council authorized the mayor and clerk to sign an agreement of purchase and sale. With Wolf King Investment Inc. Based on a price of four hundred and eighteen thousand and that the necessary by law be read.
And there's another section, it'll continue.
Yes. And further that city council authorized Wolf King Investment Inc. To act as the city's agent for the purpose of an official plan amendment and zone change for their subject property. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous, uh, look forward to seeing some new residential units coming to that, uh, property. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, three eighty-one Dundas Street, and this is the, uh. Uh, development status that we were talking about earlier with the delegations and we'll go with, uh, councillor Talbot. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you, worship. I'm going to try this and I may have to have some help with the clerk or the C O, but I will move that Woodstock City Council. Endorse a thirty day extension. For the proponent. To provide us. With. Necessary. Proof. Um, of. Um, certain requirements that we have asked for that they are met, or maybe someone can help with some wording. I just. Um, and as soon as we can get the proper wording, if I can get a second or I'll speak to the motion. Maybe, maybe the C O could help out a bit as well.
Um, your, your worship, uh, through to councillor Talbot, um. You know, if the, if the intent is to introduce a motion to provide thirty days. Um, to clean up the site and secure the site. Um, i- is, is that, is, is that the, um, the, the basic? Direction you're seeking councillor Talbot?
I mean, your worship through to, uh, Mr. Creary, um, well, I mean, that's part of it, but I mean, when I was speaking with Mr., um, Tandon, you know. Now that he is involved, I guess there's a little bit, um, or maybe I'm, um. Feeling a little bit better and, you know, if the reads are involved, I just need to know that. We're not going to be dealing with the same thing that we've been dealing with for the last four years. Um, money has been invested in this project. Um, you know, there's a reputable builder that's been doing projects in other areas of they're on board. Um, Mr. Tandon was saying, and even, uh, Mr. McCullough, that there, there are some things that they could provide to us to know that they're actually serious, that this property is not. Going to sit there and it's not going to be derelict and, um. That going forward, we're going to have a much better relationship with those involved than we have in the past. But I guess I just need something. I'm, I, I just feel we've invested this much time already. What's another thirty days? Like I said, there's been already, you know, the county has invested funds. Um, they've invested, the proponents have invested funds, um. I just, I feel like thirty days isn't any skin off our back and I want to see, I want them, I guess they can't really put their money where their mouth is, but. I want to know that going forward, it's going to be different.
Um, okay, your worship. Um, then, uh, I, my, my recommendation, uh, for council, um, if, if there's a desire. To, uh, to give an extension and out of, out of respect to Mr. Tandon and his investors. Um, they're, they're presently in default of our performance requirements, uh, that have been registered on title. Um, i- if we are going to give a thirty day extension, my recommendation is that we need to give a extension. Um, that addresses those, those breaches of those performance deadlines. And we can certainly introduce more milestones in the calendar if that's councils wish more so than just the June thirtieth. Of two thousand and twenty-one to have a building permit in hand and to have started construction. If it's councils wish to entertain an extension, my suggestion would be that we would. Have a, a first thirty day, uh, um, performance deadline to properly fence. And to clean the site up. Now the difficulty is we have a half demolished building there. Um, there's not much that can be done with much of that structure. Uh, without compromising the structural integrity of the building beside it. But there, that, that basement is filled with rubble, it's filled with domestic garbage and it's been like that for four years. There is no reason why that can't be cleaned up and it should have been cleaned up before the council meeting of today. If they were actually serious about addressing the constant complaints that have happened at this site. So my recommendation would be a thirty day cleanup and proper securing of the site. Sixty day record of site condition in hand. June thirtieth, building permit in hand. And it's important to understand that based on what we've seen right now with the concept drawings that have been submitted. And I wouldn't credit it with anything more than a concept at best. Um, that there's a zone change that is required in order to construct what. They've introduced as a concept. That's three months of process right there and it will require council's approval as well going forward. So, um, I think out of all fairness, they need at least until June thirtieth of twenty-one. To actually have that building permit in hand. So there's three potential milestones, uh, to be met. And then of course we would need one for, for construction completion. Um, so that would be the, the recommendation that I would provide to council with respect to. Um, the financial encumbrances restriction. Um, I think it's, it's important to maybe give, uh, anyone watching this meeting some more history of this property. Um, the Capitol Theater, um, had a structural roof collapse. And the owner at the time. Uh, was not insured and took no responsibility and in fact walked away from the property. Uh, the city could not leave a structurally unsafe building in its downtown. And we became the, the destructor, the demolition, uh, company of last resort. This was an extremely costly and difficult demolition project. Costs were six, seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, to demolish this building. That was funded by the taxpayers of the city. We put the property out for sale and city council accepted. The best financial proposal and that was a hundred thousand dollars. So the taxpayer ends up funding the difference already. If, if there is an extension to be granted, I think it's extremely important that the protections are provided to the taxpayer to avoid further losses on this property. And that's why it's absolutely critical that there be a condition. That restricts financial encumbrances being registered on title. Now I understand Mr. McCullough's, uh, issue with respect to construction financing. Um, and there, there, there is something that we can do to help facilitate that, I believe. Uh, but it would require them agreeing to sign a priority agreement. That the city's right to repurchase sits. Uh, ahead on, on title of the property of any financial encumbrance that gets registered. And that any financial encumbrance that is registered is fully aware that we have priority. And if we decide, the city decides to exercise its right of repurchase, they must vacate title. At no cost to the city. And unless that is agreeable to, to the, to the proponents here today. Uh, I'm afraid we cannot, uh, provide council with our recommendation to consider this any further. I want to say thank you very much for that information and the, the history and clarification. Uh, one thing we, the clerk has been working on, uh, a potential motion, but, uh. One thing we'd want to do potentially is if, if it is the intent of council that we would like to, uh. Uh, see that immediate cleanup take place and then have a, uh, uh. Delegation or a report back again, much like we had today from the proponents. Um, uh, instead of going with thirty days because of the timing of our meeting and the potential for meeting changes. If we said for our December meeting of two thousand and twenty. And at the same time, perhaps due to the complexities, uh, we might be receiving a staff report. That lays out, uh, again, those details of performance and status and notification, uh, councillor Talbot.
Your worship, I couldn't agree more and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Curie's comments and I think, you know. I, I have no problems with that. I'm even thinking we have another meeting in November, uh, Mr. Tandon has already said ten days, that site can be cleaned up, so. You know, show us and give them ten days and then we'll come back with a report and, um. Go, well, I guess they can't because we've.
So then that could make it very simple. We're coming up with another, uh, motion here, which would be to defer. This receiving this report until the November nineteenth meeting and request that the delegation, along with any other participants. Uh, attend that meeting as well and provide updates and status. And staff will, uh, make sure that we have additional information available at that point in time.
Okay, I will go ahead then and make that, and that also gives our staff an opportunity to meet with Mr. McCullough and Mr. Tandon and. See, you know, if this is going to go farther or not. I think that gives everybody fourteen more days.
Yep, that would, uh, that would be my read on that, uh, councillor lauder. Oh, no. Are, are you willing to second that?
I want, I was, I'm ready to second that motion. I agree with it wholeheartedly.
So we'll have that as the motion that we are, um, deferring. Receiving this report until the November nineteenth meeting and request that the delegates return. And that action take place and additional information be provided at that date. Uh, along with, uh, options on the staff report. Further discussion? Oh, councillor Accione.
Thank you, worship. I, I personally, I believe this is a mistake. Um. I, I mean, that's the whole point of today's meeting. You know, they, they basically had till today are ready to, uh, prove to us, uh, the seriousness and everything else to this. The, the poor residents in that area and the business owners, um, are so at their wits' end and. I, I can't speak for everybody, of course, and I don't know what kind of messages they get, but again, this is a constant. I want people at home to realize this, like this is something that literally I speak with every single day. Um, with, uh, variety or, or with the same people on a very constant basis and certainly, uh. Uh, uh, I'm so disappointed, I guess, that, um, they haven't gone ahead, cleaned up the site. Showed us the, the intent, their, their goodwill to, uh, kind of move forward, um. And, and just kind of shocked they wouldn't have somebody like Reed here to, to show, um, everything, but. Um, anyways, obviously I'm not going to support this. Thank you.
And councillor Talbot.
Thank you, worship. I just want to say I understand where councillor Accione is coming from, but again, the county has already invested five hundred, almost five hundred thousand dollars into. This, uh, particular project and, um, I'm, I can live with another fourteen days.
And I, I, I think we still have, uh, our, uh, delegations are still here on the line, so they're, uh, hearing, uh. Council's concerns loud and clear, so I imagine, uh, it might not even be a full fourteen days. We might see some. Action taking place that'll alleviate those neighborhood concerns in, in, in very short order if council goes through with this motion and, uh. Councillor Tate.
Uh, through your worship, I just want to, uh, echo councillor, uh, Talbot's comments. We do have a lot of taxpayer money invested in this. And that's a concern. If we turn it down, what are we going to end up with? So we're still going to end up with the same thing. There's still going to be an empty hole. Nobody's going to look after it. We give them the short timeline, get it done, get it fixed, and then we haven't thrown away five hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' money.
Thank you. And, uh, what I'll do, I'll reread that, uh, motion that's being moved by councillor Talbot and seconded by councillor lauder, so. Just so it's clear for everybody. That Woodstock City Council defer the report to November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty council meeting. And further that the delegation be requested to provide a presentation at that meeting to provide a status update. All right. And you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And, oh, I guess we have another, is that a question councillor Schadenberg? Okay, go ahead.
Any more of a, more of a clarification, uh, Mayor, uh, Birch is, is just to, to clarify whether or not we're, when we're talking about. The site remediation and to make the, the sites properly secured and whatnot, that we're talking about both the Capitol Theater Lot and the former Stubby's Furniture. Lot as well, because obviously part of that Stubby's Furniture Building is still there. Can they take that down in fourteen days? Might be difficult, but I think. And we're also asking them to, to, to affect the building that isn't under our control whatsoever per se, that, that the Capitol Theater Building is, but. Do we want the entire site cleaned up in fourteen days and secured as they say?
I think the intent, uh, I wouldn't want to put, uh, words into anyone's mouth, but the intent would be that they. Make their best efforts on securing what can be secured, so that would refer to the, the other partially demolished site. Um, but definitely a cleanup in general of the entire site, so, uh, any of the unsightly garbage that's in the partially demolished area would also be part of the cleanup for the Capitol Theater. I don't know if council wants to venture into territory of putting exact restrictions, but, uh, just knowing that our proponents are here listening to our discussion. I'm sure they will make best efforts to make sure that, uh, we all have a, a new understanding of a relationship going forward if it is to be extended. Beyond, uh, next council's meeting. How would that sound, everybody? I don't want to put words in the mouth or, or make this overly complex. I think, uh, uh, we'll just see. What they come up with and, and how well they do to impress us in the next few days. All right. Any further discussion? You've heard the motion, all those in favor? And opposed and it carries. Thank you. And our next item on the agenda is the traditional territorial acknowledgement. And our next item on the agenda is the traditional territorial acknowledgement. And let's see, we'll go with a mover of Councillor Lotter and a seconder, Councillor Talbot. Go ahead, Councillor Lotter.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council support the use of a traditional, a traditional territorial acknowledgement at various city events.
Thank you. And discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. Oh, Councillor Lotter. We do have our curator who put a lot of time researching this here is, I'll let you go ahead with your question, Councillor Lotter. I think I can anticipate what it is.
Yeah, I I didn't realize she's here. And it would be great if she could speak to it because I know that that she has worked great extent on this. And it'd be great to hear her speak to it.
Thank you very much, Councillor Lotter, through to the mayor. I've been working on researching this acknowledgement statement for over two years. This was to be in tandem with our banner exhibition that we had in two thousand nineteen called Life on the Back of the Turtle that featured an extraordinary collection of indigenous woodland and plains art. This is a very traditional, sorry, a very, a very typical practice in many museums and art galleries across Canada and as well as been adopted in many schools. So I went and researched a number of institutions in the surrounding southwestern Ontario region. We also seek the advice from the Oxford Indigenous Committee. And that statement that you have here is an amalgamation of all of the best practices that I was able to come up with. We have been implementing a traditional territory acknowledgement at the Woodstock Art Gallery for over a year now. And I just would really seek council's endorsement to make this citywide.
Thank you. And I think for the listeners at home, now, there's, there's two that are included, one that would specifically be used for functions with the Woodstock Art Gallery and another that would be used more broadly for the city. And for example, I could give that one right now, what is presented here. And I've I've read through it several times. So I don't have it memorized quite yet, but I'm sure if this is adopted by council, it would be used at many official functions and it would become second nature to many of us. So here goes. Welcome to the city of Woodstock situated on the traditional territories of the indigenous peoples uncovered by the Upper Canada Treaties. We would like to acknowledge the history of the traditional territory on which the city of Woodstock stands. We would also like to respect the longstanding relationships of the local indigenous groups, the Haranasani, Lanapi, and Anishan Beck. Pronunciations might be a little off. It'll get better. Of this land and a place in southwestern Ontario. We would like to recognize the indigenous communities in close proximity to the city of Woodstock. Chipawas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, Muncie Delaware Nation, Mississaugas of New Credit First Nation, and Six Nations of the Grand, which consists of Mohawk, Kayuga, Seneca, Onadaga, Oneida, and Tuscarara nations. Again, pronunciations will get better. Thank you very much. Other questions of council? All right, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And thank you very much for your hard work, the director of our and curator of our gallery. Next up, we have the minor variance for four sixty-four Devon Sharav. This is in regards to the committee of adjustment, looking for a mover on that one. Councillor Fraser.
Thank you, worship. The Woodstock City Council supports the committee adjustment decision of September fourteenth, two thousand twenty to approve the minor variance application MV dash twenty-three dash twenty four six four Devon Sharav. And council further that Woodstock Council authorized the required funding to defend the committee's decision at the local planning appeal tribunal hearing.
Thank you. And the seconded on that. Councillor Lotter, discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And opposed? And carries. Thank you. And then we have our second installment for the two thousand twenty community grants. And again, before we have the motion, I'll just remind all of the community partners and groups that we have that, of course, these funds come from our partner Gateway Casino through the OLG, the slots revenue at the fairgrounds there in the Gateway Casino. Now, this year, the pandemic has caused their doors to be closed for much of the year. With the good work of our our staff here in the Treasury Department, of course, council always expends the funds the year following receiving the funds. So this year, we're working off of last year's funding. Now, many of our community partners, due to the current situation, are not able to expand or run some of their programs. So recognizing that, our volunteer committee has gone through all of the applications and there will be funds that will be carried over to two thousand twenty-one. When we start to look at our two thousand twenty-one funds coming in, they will be greatly reduced and almost to zero because of this way now in two thousand twenty with the pandemic. But having this reserve and attributing some of these funds to next year will, if everything is back to normal, it will allow our first intake in the spring to look a little more normal. So looking for a motion on the two thousand twenty grant program, Councillor Lotter and a seconder will be Councillor Tate. Go ahead, Councillor Lotter.
Thank you. I'll move that in accordance with the community grants policy G A zero zero three. Woodstock City Council allocates the following grants for the year two thousand twenty. Cycles of life supportive transitional living, one thousand dollars, the Oxford Historical Society, two thousand dollars, Oxford Winds Community Concert Band, two thousand dollars, Woodstock and District Developmental Services, five thousand dollars, Woodstock Lawn Bowling Club, two thousand dollars, Woodstock Legion Athletic Club, two thousand two hundred dollars. And further that Woodstock City Council authorized the carryover of the balance from account zero two zero four dash eight three seven four seven dash zero 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 to the two thousand twenty-one budget year in order to provide funding for the two thousand twenty-one community grants program.
Thank you. Discussion? Councillor Lotter.
Again, our our committee has done a great job of trying to go through the, going through the applications. I, we've got a great committee. And I just want to welcome our new member on there that replaced one of the gentlemen that moved out of the city and was unable to be part of the committee. Our new member is Steve Collins. And he was there for that meeting. And Len Reeves, our chair, runs such an efficient meeting that everybody, everyone comes prepared and we don't take so long to go through this. We we discuss it. We all, we have a great discussion. And Steve was quite surprised how quickly we we could come up with our decisions. And so we just thank, thank Steve and welcome him to the committee.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up is the Woodstock Art Gallery Fund. Councillor Talbot and seconded by Councillor Lotter.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approves the one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar installment from the Flowers as Flowers Estate be directed to the Woodstock Art Gallery Fund.
Thank you. And discussion? Councillor Lotter.
Yes, this is wonderful for our art gallery. They, we received two hundred fifty thousand dollars sometime ago, a few months ago. And now this is an additional one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we certainly appreciate this money that has flown through to us from the Flowers Estate. And just wish to thank them all for this.
Thank you. And well deserved. Thanks. Further discussion? And just remind the viewers at home that the city of Woodstock, for any of our cultural recreation and other activities that we offer in the city, sponsorship opportunity is available and charitable tax receipts will be issued for those amounts. If you'd like to find out more, contact city hall staff or any of your counselors or myself for further details. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up is new business. And for that motion that was introduced by Councillor Acioli, I'll just remind council that we need unanimous consent to consider that item on today's agenda. So is there any objection from council for this motion? And seeing none, Councillor Acioli, go ahead.
Thank you. Move on myself, that Woodstock City Council appoint Gary Way to the Woodstock Public Library Board with the term ending November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Looking for a seconder.
Thank you. And seconder, we'll go with Councillor Schadenberg. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And next up, we will have bylaws. Councillor Tate.
I'll move by myself, seconded by Councillor Fraser, that the following bylaws be given a first and second reading. Ninety-four dash, or nine, nine four sixteen dash twenty, a bylaw to men's city of Woodstock Municipal Code, chapter three thirty, nine four one seven dash twenty, a bylaw to provide for the sale of certain lands owned by the Corporation of the City of Woodstock to two six two eight four three six Ontario Inc. And nine four one eight dash two, a bylaw to provide for the sale of certain lands owned by the Corporation of the City of Woodstock, Wolf King Investments Limited.
Thank you. And discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. Councillor Tate.
I'll move by myself, seconded by Councillor Fraser, that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading. Ninety-four one six dash twenty, nine four one seven dash twenty, and nine four one eight dash twenty.
Thank you. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And tonight, for addresses, we'll start with Councillor Talbot. And you're Mike, Councillor Talbot. Oh, sorry, you're Mike, Councillor Talbot. Here we go.
Sorry, I clicked it, but it didn't go on. Sorry. I said I'd be short and sweet because I have a board of health meeting that started at three o'clock that I plan on attending. I just want to say Remembrance Day is next Wednesday. And with the COVID that we are experiencing, it won't be the same type of service that we've had in the past. So regardless of where you are, just remember at eleven o'clock to stand and reflect for two minutes to all those people that gave their lives for our freedom. It's the most respectful thing to do. And with the COVID, still remember, keep your distance, social distancing, wearing your masks, washing your hands and using the cleanser. We've experienced a little bit of a rise, but hopefully we can get things back under control again. Thank you, your worship. Oh, and I was going to say poppies are out and available for sale. I bought one at the post office today.
Thank you. And of course, it's on a volunteer basis for the contribution for the poppy. So dig as deep as you can. And remember, as you lose them, make sure you get another one. And I know that even though the ceremonies will be done remotely for the veterans based on the requests from the Legion and the Navy Club, there will be many individuals that will still be at the Senate half and just stay safe while you're there. And again, yeah, on the eleventh hour. Next up, we will go with Jerry, Councillor Acioli.
Thank you, worship. Again, I'll be brief. I just want to say a happy Remembrance Day to everybody, of course. Please thank a veteran anytime you can, pay respects and just be safe out there. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. And we'll go with Ron, Councillor Fraser.
Thank you, worship. And I'll just reiterate, Councillor Talbot and Councillor Acioli, that let's not forget our veterans. Always said, one of the highlights of Remembrance Day ceremony was actually hugging one. But we can't do that this year. But let's, we can't forget them either. So support them however we can. And and let's look forward to increasing our safety and reducing the pandemic.
Thank you very much. And next up, we will go with Mark, Councillor Schadenberg.
So I wanted to say that I've been flipping through the What's on Woodstock magazine. And boy, they continue to do a terrific job funneling the information, whether it be from your art gallery or the museum or wherever, to the Brad Jantsch and Jeff Kopp, Spencer Holman, that whole crew continue to do a terrific job compiling the What's on Woodstock magazine. I even noticed in there, there's a Zoom book club. So if you, if you still love to do your reading and everyone's probably getting more reading in, just as a new more bulk TV show watching, the Zoom book clubs and things like that continue even through through COVID nineteen. And one comment I want to make about the volunteerism in the city, what's, I love to talk about volunteerism and people who donate their time. Woodstock Library Board, very, very difficult to make a choice as to who to sit on that board. We had seventeen applications for people to volunteer in that committee. And that's phenomenal. So they continue to want to volunteer in the city of Woodstock and and continue to volunteer in the city of Woodstock. We have some great organizations and and great people here locally. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. And next up, we'll go with Connie, Councillor Lotter.
Thank you. The Woodstock Art Gallery, their fall two thousand twenty exhibition opens on November the fourteenth. Blazes along the trail, exploring David Mills' Imagine of Vision Works. This won't be a regular opening as we've had in the past because of COVID, of course. So there will be no reception. But anyone can stop in and see this exhibition. And I want to recognize Mayor Birch for his successful work to freeze the fixed portion of the Woodstock water and sewer rates for the next four years. And also recognize the support of our two county councillors in this effort. County staff are proposing increases of four point two percent per year, which will only result in continuing to amass large capital reserves, which presently is twenty-one point five million higher than the projected at the last study four years ago. Secondly, I also want to recognize the efforts of Mayor Birch and Councillor Tate in the removal of the majority mandatory forty-eight hour notice to send an alternative to a county council meeting. I know firsthand how important it is to have Woodstock fully represented at each county meeting. With this change, I will be able to represent Woodstock on a much shorter notice. I assure you, I will act in the best interest of both the city and the county citizens. And finally, I want to recognize Mayor Birch and Councillor Tate in their efforts to oppose and bring common sense to the county staff proposal to introduce a county-funded rural intercommunity transit system. Public transportation is not under the jurisdiction of the County of Oxford. And Woodstock taxpayers will pay approximately forty percent of any portion funded by the county. And please take time on November the eleventh to remember those who served in order for us to enjoy the freedom we have. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And next up, Councillor Tate.
First, I just want to start by welcoming back our bylaw officer Dylan Newton. I'm glad he's back. He's healthy. And I think we're now up to our three free bylaw. So glad to see him back. He actually thought I was in trouble with a loose dog. So he stopped by, didn't realize it was me. So I was glad to see him back. Second, thank you to Councillor Lotter for those comments. It's been a real battle. So everybody's aware, it was a six before vote for the bus, so which we lost. So as everyone's probably aware too, as a taxpayer needs to know, we'll be seeking legal action. That was the motion that we passed here. I did hear from a number of councillors, just for councils where from the other different municipalities and townships, and they are all very concerned. So they're very pleased with our council, the direction we're going, and they're all keeping an eye on what's going. We did receive the latest report from the Middlesex Bus Trial. And as you can read from it, they get about one person per week on the bus. So it is of a deep concern. As you're probably also aware, EZT had done the motion to take on this be the lead, which is a concern because now they're going to have total control over the bus service that is going to be supplied and the county is going to be on the hook for the rest. service that is going to be supplied, and the county is going to be on the hook for the rest of it. And also councillor Birch, or sorry, Mayor Birch will be on the committee talking about the makeup of the county, and I'm hoping that also would be the makeup of the warden. And just so the taxpayers aware, back in, I think it was the term of two thousand and six, the current mayor, Don McKay did a motion at county council, I wasn't on council at the time, but he tripled the salary of the warden. So this is a big concern, because it seems to me there's a lot of games that go, that playing on at county council, and I think maybe the pay has something to do with it, it it is concerning, I'm, ever since he did that motion, he's ran for warden every single term. So it's, I think there needs to be a change. And on a positive note, I did meet our new county CAO, Michael Dubin, and he is a breath of fresh air, so we're hoping for a very good relationship, he seems very knowledgeable, very friendly, very approachable, and very good change, I believe, for the city of Woodstock and the county, that's it.
Well, thank you for that, and especially the update on our neighbors' rural transit system. They developed their rural transit system with the same type of community engagement with limited response, much like we saw from the county of Oxford, speaking about getting people to work, getting people to their appointments, etc. And as councillor Tate mentioned, on average, getting about one rider per week on the route, well, in fact, it's so abysmal that they made the service free of charge, and in that first two weeks, so waiving the fee completely, now that's not waiving the fee to taxpayer, that's waiving that small contribution from the rider. And this is partly what the county based their rural transit desire off of is, is the one to our neighbors, which went from Oxford County through Thorndale into London. And on that particular route, they actually had weeks with zero ridership. And the response within their community was even greater than the one in our, our neighboring communities here. So again, we're not done with that battle yet, as it was mentioned, it was a six to four vote, of course, the county councillor representing the town of Tilsenberg voted no. The county councillor representing Ingersoll voted no, as well as myself and councillor Tate. Unfortunately, if we'd had one more vote, it would have been a tie vote and defeated, but we weren't able to secure that fifth vote. But of course, all of that's available in the minutes at the county of Oxford, it was a recorded vote, you'd be able to see who voted which way. And we're not quite through with this yet, we all do believe in making sure that we ensure equality of life, not just for our residents here in the friendly city, but for our entire community, Woodstock is the heart of Oxford County. And we have a lot of the services, the, the community partners, the nonprofit groups, and many of the amenities that individuals from our neighboring townships require, whether they're young or old. And recognizing that the funds are limited, and especially as we look at updates coming out even in the coming days, there will be a lot of information provided from the new budget proposal from the province of Ontario, as well as we know the commitments that have been made federally as well. And it's time that we make sure that every dollar that we collect, that we spend it in the most efficient way possible. So just reaching out to any of the residents, as, as councillor Tate mentioned, that many different people from our neighboring municipalities have reached out to us with the concern of this rural transit system that seems to be spearheaded by the county of Oxford. And of course, that meeting is available to view, and of course, the, the director of Public Works who was here and answered many questions of this council at our previous meeting, he did indicate that he's spent about thirty percent of his time working on this issue, and had to be re-tendered by the only remaining partner of the three northern townships. So I, I, I seem to think that our, our legal position will be one that is very easy for us to demonstrate that the county's involvement is much greater than the municipal act would allow. So we'll continue to keep you updated on this, and there's a lot of good information on the city website, on the community calendar regarding many events that are taking place. And you can always stay up to date with the city Facebook page, and hopefully we will enjoy hearing those harvards, I haven't had a confirmation yet whether or not they will be flying, but I have a feeling that if you take that time to pause and reflect on November eleventh, that you will hear the sound of those engines that we've all become so familiar, that represents part of our commitment from the past to the, the freedom and safety that we all enjoy today. So looking for a motion to adjourn? And move by councillor Fraser, seconded by councillor Schattenberg, you've heard the motion, all those in favor?